This is Al.
That's still a phone.
Okay, all right, we'll call the meeting to order for November for the Board of Trustees for the Liberty Lake Municipal Library. And welcome anybody who is online and to all the people sitting out in the in the chambers. All right, so we'll take quick roll, Anna. I know you.
Here.
I know you're here, yeah, we'll make it official, okay, Jen.
Here.
Barb?
I'm here, I'm actually in Australia, but I'm here.
I'm here, but I can see, what time is it there?
It is seven AM on Thursday morning.
Oh my goodness, seven AM, okay, and I just saw Michael walk in, so we'll make a check next to his name. And Jen's here, which was good, I'm here, which is also good. And Jenny's here, which makes it very good, okay, so we're all here. All right, so I will ask for approval of the agenda or any additions to the agenda, changes. Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those who are in favor approving the agenda as written. Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, all right, and now we will move on to the minutes. Unless there are any changes, additions, corrections to the minutes, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I approve the minutes from the October meeting.
Second, third?
Good, and second, then I'll take another aye for approval of the minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are all good to go, all right. So now we'll move on to Jenny, do we have anybody online?
No, I don't have anyone online.
Okay, so we're gonna skip even the whole thing, then, if we don't have any online. All right, we'll go to reports, and we'll ask our city administrator, Mark, if he has any comments or anything to report to us today.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, I'll just say that the city council at the meeting on Tuesday, the I'm sorry, on Monday, the tenth, had its first specially called budget meeting workshop, and so we had formally started discussing the detail of the proposed 2026 budget. We got through what I would call a preliminary review of all of the funds and departmental budgets in the context of our priority-based budgeting system. And that discussion will continue at the next regularly scheduled meeting on November the eighteenth, and likely through at least one additional special meeting until the budget is put on the agenda for adoption. And just as a reminder to everyone, by statute, the budget must be adopted by December thirty-first of the preceding year for business to occur in the subsequent year. And so, we typically try to give ourselves a one-meeting cushion, meaning that the goal would be to have the budget adopted on the December second meeting. But if for some reason that doesn't occur, we have the second December meeting to fall back on. But the goal is to have it tied up to a point where it can be adopted on December second, so that would be the extent of my report. And we can answer, Jenny and I can collectively answer any questions that you may have about the budget, whether it's specifically about the library's budget or any other aspect of the city's budget.
Does anybody have any questions for Mark regarding budget or any other city matter? Or library matter?
This is Barb. I don't have a question about the budget, I just wondered if the council has had an opportunity to discuss the results of the election on the advisory vote.
So there's been no formal discussion, Barb, that I can report back on. I don't know that there will be any. I could be wrong, but there's nothing scheduled at this point to have a, call it a post-mortem debrief on that topic.
Mark, can you remind us what, when this was, the intention was to bring this in front of the citizens? What was the plan if the vote was no? So, because now we have a vote of no, so what was the kind of the expected consequence of that from a city council perspective?
There was no discussed consequence. There was no planned consequence.
All right.
And so, so the, the options at this point, if you will, are that the project essentially just dies on the vine, that's one option. Another option is that, excuse me, that the incoming council could pick up the project, do some additional public engagement to determine what could become a viable project and move on from there. Or the incoming city council could start from scratch and try to develop a different kind of project that included a larger library of some kind. But I think that's, any of those options is yet to be determined.
So as of now, the vote no means the project is not considered viable by the city council as of now?
I don't know if I would say that, I would say that there's no planned follow-up action based on the results of this election by this council at this time.
There, you're also sending both the your role and her message into the platform at City Council.
Sure.
So, I appreciate this.
So, Mark, would it be accurate to say that probably the course of action would be to wait till the new council is sworn in to determine any further action, if any action would be taken in regards to the vote?
That's certainly possible, it's also possible that this council could choose to put an item on the agenda to have further discussion about the results of the election and what that means going forward. As of today, they've not done that.
Do you know what the percentage Liberty Lake voters protested in this election? Are you aware of what that might be?
By looking at the vote totals, I would estimate it to be right around the thirty percent mark. But I would have to get an official tally from the election zones. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Okay, we will move on to the Friends group. That would be me, so the Friends group are active, they have a book sale coming up on the twenty-first, and they're preparing working pretty hard getting that all squared away and ready to go, it's always successful. It's a two-day event, Friday and Saturday. And so, they're also in the process of advertising for a new event, and it's really not a fundraiser, it's a fundraiser called Family Trivia Night, which is held room-to-room on the twenty-first. The Trailhead Rotary Room, food provided by Chavalitas, the new restaurant in the Trailhead. Should be a fun night, and we hope that a lot of people will sign up for that, it's a team event, and it's a tournament, so the tournament winner gets a trophy that goes, that will be displayed in the, in the library. There's other goodies along the way too, for the people that participated, so hoping to have a good turnout. And it will be a lot of fun, I can guarantee that, so that's pretty much my report for the Friends.
The one thing I would add about the book sale, and maybe I told you guys this before, but the book sale starts on Friday afternoon, it starts at noon, and we will have people come into the library at ten AM, like, where's the books now? And we'll be like, oh, it's not till noon, and you know, they do out of the meeting room. And we will have a line of like thirty people waiting outside the meeting room door for the book sale, starting at like eleven-thirty until they open at noon. So they will open at noon with like forty people in that room amongst all the books and the tables, and it is busy the entire time.
They will wait even in the rain.
Yes, they will.
So, yeah, yeah, very popular event, and very, normally very successful events as well. There's some pretty good books in there, that people donate to our library to resell free and interest me.
Could you please confirm the exact Friday date of this week?
November twenty-first and twenty-second.
It's usually noon to six?
Noon, noon.
And then nine to three?
No, it's nine to three on Saturday.
Yes.
And noon to six on Friday.
Yes.
I'll just say, there are some cool books in there, I mean, we've got, we had some donations on Native American history from around our area that were huge. Absolutely incredible, I had the opportunity to come through some of the pages. Amazing, some of the things that we get, that's just one example, but it's incredible, some of the really cool books that people have collected over time that I would add to the, pretty cool. Okay, so now we're on to our library director, our infamous library director Jenny, who is giving us her report.
So, I wanted to, sorry guys, I'm dealing with a cold, and so I sound like a monster, like this is so raffy. I first wanted to update you guys on Halloween. We had our Halloween event on Thursday, October thirtieth, the day before Halloween. We always do it the Thursday prior to Halloween, and this is the longest event we have been hosting at the library, we've been hosting it every year since two thousand and three. So, it's definitely our longest-running event, this year our theme was Wicked, of course. Michaela decorated the library really cute with all these Wicked and Wizard of Oz decorations, it turned out really cute. We do several different carnival-style games, the last couple of years we've had a face painter, which has been really popular. And then the friends of the library help out immensely with the event, with running the different games and activities that we have. This year, our attendance was two hundred and sixty-eight. So it's one, it's our biggest event that we host like inside of the library. And it went really, really well, the police officers came and gave out candy to the kids, and they actually went back into the meeting room and played bingo with the kids as well, which I thought was really sweet. So, amazing turnout at Halloween. The second thing is our children's librarian, Jordan, Jordan Larkin, she started today. I spent the entire morning with her, she's gonna be undergoing training for the next two weeks with me and Michaela, our team and adult librarian. I'm really excited to have her on board. We haven't had a formal children's librarian in three or four years, and so I've kind of given her the reins to I can have her like observe story time over the next month and see what gaps we have, and come up with any changes that she wants to make, so I told her, we can take the reins, complete overhaul if that's what you want to do. But I'm really excited and happy to have a new children's librarian on board, we've been trying to hire her since May. So it's been a very long road, but it's I genuinely feel like we ended up with the best candidate out of all of the candidates that we've interviewed. So, I'm really happy where we ended up, even though it was a long road of getting there. So next time you guys are in the library, I would love to introduce you to her. I don't remember if I mentioned this, last month, we got laptop power bank chargers. So it just looks like a really large like battery pack, like this big, but you're able to plug in your laptop. And so we've got those back in the teen area, where we have all of our tables and chairs. Because as you know, power is one of our hugest, our biggest struggles that we have at the library, and they have been getting really well-used, so we're really happy about that. Our cell check units are both down. Both of them died at the same time, which is frustrating, but also like we were able to order all the parts together. So, we'll be getting those back up and running here shortly. Evan's been working with us on getting them running, like I told you, we've got a new software, so we will have brand-new units and brand-new software. The last thing I wanted to go over with you guys is as far as the budget goes, let me take a drink. So I just wanted to share with you guys a couple of things that I mentioned to the council on Monday, so I mentioned to them two of our biggest programs that we're running as far as our priority-based budgeting. The first one is our laptop kits, but I think I mentioned to you guys how, you know, we don't have enough desktop computers in the library, and so next year I'm looking at purchasing some Chromebooks as well as a laptop charging unit box that we can, you know, put all the laptops in there and they'll charge, but then when we're out of desktop computers, it's another thing that we can offer to our patrons so that they can still use the internet and do what they need to do. The other one, and I don't think I mentioned this to you, is our library speakers consortium. Okay, I don't think I mentioned this to you, I just didn't want to repeat myself, so some feedback that we continue to get from patrons is just that they want to see more speakers in the library. And obviously there are some challenges with that, are, you know, we don't have a lot of space in the library, and it is expensive to get speakers from, you know, across the country, to travel here to, okay. So there's this new company, it's a library speakers consortium, it's basically on-demand speakers. So each month they will have a new fiction author and a new nonfiction author, and they get big names. Kristen Hannah, Danielle Silver, Silva, like, big names, to do these speaking engagements. So, basically each library gets provided with a website where patrons can log on in real time. So they can log on in real time, listen to the speaker, they have a chat feature, a question and answer feature, where you do have the ability to interact live, but then it also has that on-demand feature where you can go back later and watch the speakers. So the county tried this out last year, and it was pretty successful, and so we are trying that this year. So it's twenty-five hundred dollars for the whole year, and it's going to give us twenty-four speakers over the course of the year, so one fiction and one nonfiction author each month. So we thought that was kind of a a good way to go about it, where they can log on live and watch it if they want, or it's just on-demand for them to go back and watch later, so we figure we'll get better usage that way.
Sure.
Being available.
Jenny, how will the patrons access that?
So, we are going to put it on like in our calendar of events, like we would any other program. So it'll be on our calendar event and in our newsletter on our Facebook page, but basically in the calendar events we'll post the URL where they can go and watch it from there, and then obviously we'll have a page on our website that has everything. And basically it will link to that formal Liberty Lake Speakers Guild page.
That's cool. That's nice, oh, it'd be very cool, we got a bigger library to host speakers, authors, that could come in and and, you know, I'm sure patrons would really enjoy a personal
Absolutely.
interaction with an author, you know, or any, another speaker of some sort that would come in, that would be great, but maybe someday. Okay.
Are we, are you able to have also like a watching party or some group that meets at the library and then watches this together, or it's then to be for?
I think that's a great idea, for sure, yes, maybe Michaela's already thought of that, and it just wasn't on my mind, but yes, absolutely.
Good idea, mine.
So that's everything that has far as my report goes.
Good. Anybody have any, anyone have any other questions for Jenny? Okay.
Just a personal, I have feedback, I, my kids really enjoy the inboxes, and I probably talked about them last week, but really fun to see how you know, your team put them together, and then went from books to snacks to the crafts and everything, they're packed into a single box.
Yes, I saw your last name, so I knew it was your kids.
But very well thought, and very, very creative, because it's not just reading a book, it's also like you keep a book, you read one from the library, it's personalized, and then you have the little treats for the kids, like, oh, I'm getting a snack, do this.
Yeah, you know, I've said this, and I said it from the very beginning, that our staff that works in the library, they're incredible people. And the amount of services and things they provide for our community with the limited space and the limited access to different things that they have to work within in that library is incredible. And I'm not sure that everyone in this community understands all that they have to do to provide those, those services to them.
Hold on, Michael, I thought the snacks were for the parents. Is that not how that works?
Yes, Anna's kids are signed up as well.
They love it, so yes, thank you backing me up for that.
We have a lot of books at home, and we constantly buy books, and I have a lot of them that are waiting for me to read, and I never gonna have time to read them all.
Don't you?
Well, it's a
The principal one?
I had a lot of but it is, it goes well beyond the books, right, like this is an experience for our kids, then, I can buy them that book, but it's not the same thing.
Same thing. No, I
Or like, Michaela gave us some feedback, one of my kids said like, I want something different, and I had no idea how they would navigate what his request was, and she was like, oh no, I know exactly what, and then I gave her next, I didn't work well.
That's cool, very cool. Okay, so now we're on, are we good, or?
I just wanted to add, you know, just to keep talking about the tween book boxes. The last couple of years we've had fifteen teens and fifteen younger kids, school-aged kids that are participating. This year we have over thirty on each side. So we heavily expanded the program this last year, just from the demand of how many kids see it and wanna participate.
Yeah, very cool. All right, so now we are on to the quarterly report to council, so we are up for a quarter, quarterly report in December. And so we, we, I'm going did you, so Anna, are you okay with working with Jenny and organizing and presenting this next quarterly report?
Sure, I'm not much of a public speaker, but we'll wing it, how are we, do we normally just split it, or?
I'll text you, and we'll come up with a time that we can meet. I saw that you wanted to do the December second meeting, and that works totally fine for me.
Yeah, I'm out of town on the sixteenth, so.
Yeah, so the second works great.
Okay.
From our discussion today, I think we should showcase the tween book boxes as part of the
I think that would be
I don't think that's something we've talked to the council about before.
Yeah.
And since Barb just presented in September, we don't have a huge roster of topics for this time.
Right, no, I think that's a great idea, thanks Anna for doing that.
Yeah, well, it's near, near to my heart, so I can happily talk about the tween boxes, that I can do.
You will have that snack right before, it's gonna give you that boost of energy.
Expect nothing less.
No, that's great, so that means everybody's had their, had an opportunity to be in front of the, the
Council.
Council, yeah, thank you, and so that they know when they see faces that are on the Board of Trustees. Okay, so I'll let, so you guys will, we won't wait before, so will you send that out to us so we can all kind of preview it?
Yes.
And make any suggestions that we might have?
Yes, absolutely.
That would be great, before it goes before the council, thank you. All right, so now we're gonna talk about twenty-two six officers. So we're at that time of year again, so in January we will have to make our votes for our new officers, and that is the chair, which I will not be chair next year, I bought, I'm removing myself from that position. Because next year we might finally be on the Board of Trustees, so I'd like it to transit, transition over to someone else. So give that some thought, and so I'll still be the Friends liaison, because I'm part of Friends, so that, I would be happy to do that, if that's a concern for anyone. But we do need to have those, those things, our secretary, our chair, and the liaison to the Friends.
And then the council.
And the council liaison, right, so be thinking about that for our first meeting in January, and we will solidify those positions, and we will move forward from there. Anybody have any questions on any of those positions? Okay. Great. So now we are on to the approval of our last well, last couple meetings prior to this, that we solidified the wording and made edits to the library card eligibility. Does anybody need to have that brought up on the screen, or want to review that prior to us taking, taking a motion and approval? Well, oh, actually, well, wait a minute, oh, that's, Jenny, you know what, that's because it's in blue on my, on my that I turned out, oh, my computer put it in blue, and I go on, I thought that meant something else entirely. I got it, thank you, Jenny, we are now on to the meeting room policy, that's my mistake, we're not on the action items yet, so meeting room policy. Jenny, you wanna take the lead on that as to what we, what you're looking for us to consider?
Yes, so we we updated our meeting room policy in twenty-twenty-three, so it's not super old, we've only had it for two years. I sent you guys out two documents, one is the library meeting room use policy, which is our formal policy. The other one is like the information that we have on the website. Now, obviously, not all the information on a website needs to be in a policy. You know, information and policies are different, but we've been finding some discrepancies, and patrons have been a little bit confused. So, for example, on our our website, we have information that like specifically states that you can't use the meeting room for like a wedding, or a birthday party, or a retirement event. But it doesn't necessarily explicitly state that in the meeting room policy. So we have had some pushback where, you know, a staff member, somebody will come up to the desk and they'll want to use the meeting room, and we'll say, oh, I'm sorry, that's not like a permit, a permitted use, and they're like, well, it doesn't actually say that in the policy. So I just kind of want to comb through both of these documents and find something that's a little bit more cohesive, but that is clear enough to patrons that the meeting room isn't a party room, it's a community room for community events, education events, that sort of thing.
Right, so
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, and I, just thinking Jenny, as I was looking through this earlier, would it be would it be a good idea to, afterward says the study room is available to reserve for the following that either we make another heading underneath there with the bullet points of the following
This, like says
That
Purpose.
These things are not permitted, or whatever, I don't know how we would title it, but right underneath that it would say these things do not qualify for usage or reserved, reserved in the meeting for use, I'm not sure.
Do you have the same issue or concern with the study room, or is that primarily the?
I would say the meeting room is where it's the biggest issue, because study room, kind of like within the name.
Yeah.
People understand what it is for, and it's a smaller room. But obviously, it extends to both rooms.
I wonder if we, if we enlarged the section in the policy under implementation and, and pulled in some of the criteria for using from the website and the, like maybe positive language for, here's the criteria for using it, here's the kinds of meetings that are appropriate, and then probably we would still need the one line, or, or a couple of lines with negating social or commercial activities.
I have several questions later on, but I wanna clarify, is the I have, I have several questions later on, but I wanna clarify, is the ask for us to align what's on the website with the policy? Or also to look at the policy and potentially adjust the policy at this time?
I would say both. But I guess the impetus for me with bringing it forward was there is some inconsistency and it's causing confusion.
Thank you.
But yes, I'm open to us completely overhauling anything that needs to be overhauled. We can reorganize it in the way that we think. Um, makes the most sense.
And, and, and kind of another kind of pre discussion question is like, what's the? You kind of the, the ratio between capacity and utilization right now, like what's, how often are the rooms used? Is there a very large demand? Where, where are we from that point of view? Like are we? At a point where we, the rooms are occupied for a long time, so then we wanna encourage different things, so. Right, just knowing that we might not have a larger space for a little bit of time.
So um, the study room is used more than the meeting room. Um. Because the meeting room is like locked off in the mornings for storytime. Um, we get a lot of usage for the meeting room in the evenings from five to eight P M. So there could be several days a week that it's full in the evening. Um, the study room is primarily ten to six during open hours. Some days it's booked back to back to back to back all day. And then on Monday, we didn't have any reservations. Um, the study room is open if nobody's using it. We have a whiteboard where we write down what reservations are, so if nobody's using it, somebody can just walk in and use it. The meeting room is not open for like walk-in use. It has to be reserved specifically to be in use.
And then how do you prioritize, how do you operationalize this? Prioritizing certain categories of people, cause I assume like if the. The friends want the room tomorrow and somebody's already booked tomorrow, probably not kind of cancel the meeting that's tomorrow.
Yeah, so um, like with the friends, we book out all of their meetings for the whole year. So they're just already in the calendar that they're using it one, cause they use it one day in a month. Um, for everyone else, it's a first come, first served basis and we can book up to sixty days in advance. Um, so basically all of the, you know, library events that we need it for are booked out in there and then like the friends are booked out in there. Um. So I wouldn't say there's like a formal priority where it's like, it's just kind of more a first come, first serve as long as it's a permitted use.
But it is in a way like you open the reservations earlier for the friends.
Yes.
And sixty days for.
Yeah, so like Michaela's gonna go in in December and she'll just book out all of the friends meetings, cause we know it's like the fourth Thursday of the month. And book them out.
So the biggest thing here is just making our um policy align with what's on the internet. Or vice versa, make the internet align with what's on our policy statement. Am I correct?
Yes.
Right, and so that means other implementation, as you said, Jen, we need to um take a, a, a look at. Do we, how we, how we work and what we present under the meeting room use. I'm not sure prioritized is the right word there because I think.
It's more a first, come first serve.
Yeah, because you do have a come, uh, first serve uh basis.
Yeah.
But maybe um. Uh, meeting room, I mean, what, we could come up with a different word there that would more represent. How, how activities are. Um. What activities are allowed to meet in that room? Um, so is there, do we have anything in, uh, I, I don't see anything in our policy that states. Uh, size of, 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 of the reservation, like if someone wants to reserve it for. Forty people or fifty people, it would be over the, over the limit.
It does say that I'm gonna accommodate.
It does.
It can accommodate up to thirty nine.
We'll point that out, Jen. Good.
And do we wanna, are we open to the idea that if the room is free? We can potentially rent it for certain types of activities that we don't. So like somebody wants to have a party. In a nice way and nobody else is using that room. Is that still a banned activity or is that gonna be something that we can potentially monetize and use the funds for something else?
I think that's what.
That's kind of the point, right?
But that, I mean, that's one of the questions that I may have is like, do we wanna list things that we don't wanna have? Or are we open to the idea that we could have things that we, you know, people, people pay for it?
I'm not sure you wanna put the library in a, in a. A rental, as a rental space. I, I don't, that's, that's my, that would be my opinion. I don't know that. The city would want to engage in trying to determine rental units and stuff. That, I don't know.
Or managing a custodial.
All kinds of things that come along with a rental fee, that, right, so.
So you guys will, will still prefer to have only the same type of activities?
Well, you know, those are, I, I think we need to kind of, my opinion would be that we need to kind of um. If, 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 if we're gonna specifically say cer- certain things can't happen there, we need to specifically. We either need to specific, specifically say only these activities are, are eligible for. Um, um, reserving the space. And, and I'd prefer to say it in a positive way rather than a negative way, but um. So I, um, but. Uh, there could be others that might, might fit into this category that aren't on our list already, these three, these three things here. I don't know.
Jenny, on the, on the website side, right that top paragraph, it says the meeting room is available without charge. Should that be part of the policy or is it, and I just. Oh, it's on the very back.
I'm the same.
Uh, the very last line says while the library does not require via cleaning or maintenance, be needed charged.
Uh, Mark, do you know, uh, if um, when people try to reserve other rooms, like the trailhead space? Uh, if they can't get in there, are they, are they given the? Are they sent to another to, like to say, you can reserve it at a, a space at the library or how, how does that work? Like someone tries to get into Trailhead, it's a smaller group and they can't, are they, that? Are they suggested, suggested to go to the library or how? Not sure how that would work.
I, so the uh, the, the management of the Rotary Room has been uh by contract placed. Under Chevalitas uh since they came in, so I, I would have to ask them that question. I think it's a good uh reminder that if. Groups are requesting the use of that and either they're. Uh, not, that their date is not available or some other reason why it's not available to. Make sure that they point them in other directions if it's inappropriate use. I, I don't know if that's happening today. Yes, thank you.
I think it also depends on the event because Shalva's can cater and that's not something that we do at the hybrid.
Sure. Yeah, no, I was just curious if um, they have, if people were sent in that direction or not. So, um, maybe we need to digest this more before we actually. We, we all need to digest this and maybe come back with some jet, so we are. I just wanna make sure we're clear. We're gonna focus on the implementation part, right? And we're gonna focus on a meeting room uh usage. And try to, and then also we're gonna match whatever we have under the policy up with um. The uh, what, the website page. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Jenny, is everything else on the website page? Is that pretty much in um, uh, in alignment with our policy? About reservations, is that in alignment with our policy and stuff? I didn't read the whole thing, but then.
I would say anything in this document is up for, up.
Up for, up for review.
I kind of want to like marry these two together into like the best version.
Got it.
Um.
Okay.
Cause yeah, I'm, like you're seeing, there's some stuff on here that's not in there and they should probably be much more cohesive.
Got it.
Yeah, it's not like indents.
I think that would be ultimate, the ultimate goal is that it turns into one.
I think I.
With the link to the calendar.
I agree.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's.
So that there's not confusion, just have that be the same.
Yeah, I agree. Policy is the thing and the website just says, here's your link to the policy and that's how you give your information. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Hmm.
Yeah.
That I think.
Then I, I would agree with that.
The mo, the most uh accessible to the community if it was the scene.
Right. So we're actually gonna fuse these into one document.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we finally got to the right spot, yeah.
And make, and make it a policy.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, so we can work on that in between now and our next meeting and bring back our ideas and um. I, I, I don't know if anyone wants to make a rough draft of what the policy would look like.
I'd be happy to.
Would you be willing to do that, Jen?
Yeah, I'd love it.
Jenny, do you happen to have the policy in a Word doc?
Yes, I just early found it. As you could see, I was like combing through, cause it's like, oh, I downloaded it and then I was like, it's a PDF, I can't edit this. So yes, I have it now.
That's great. If you could send that to me, then I'll use that and maybe like strike out and, and post some language from here.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Jen, for doing that and um, then maybe you could send it out to us?
Yeah.
And then we can preview it before we meet again.
Absolutely.
Perfect. That's great. Jen, Jenny, will that work for you?
Absolutely.
As far, as far as time?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, super. Alright, so we have that one taken care of. Alright, and so now, um, Jenny, uh, did you wanna bring up the uh? The library card eligibility thing up on the screen or can you do that?
Did I leave that on there, on the agenda? Cause I didn't think that was on.
It's on here. I thought we already approved it, but I, I thought we approved it last time, but it is on our, under action items.
I bet I just didn't delete it, cause we did that and then we took it to the council in September.
Right, but that's what I thought.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, that was just me, clerical error.
That was both of us. We, we get together, we made this, so, okay, so we'll strike that from the uh, from the um thing. And um, before we adjourn, Mark, I have a, I have just a couple of other questions.
Sure.
I'm wondering, could you uh, could you tell us how much um, the city council? How much money have they put into uh the um. Planning of the library, all the, do you have that on, on top of your head? How, or is there a place that we can go to get that information? I'm, I'm curious as to how much money has already been spent. On um, those, you know, discussion, um, the community assessment. All the, all those things that have gone into uh, library planning, uh, for, planning for a new library. I'm just curious. So if you go back to the two thousand and seven project. Um, and. Convert all of those dollars to twenty twenty-five dollars and then make some reasonable estimate of. Staff time that was included to develop and review and uh do all the assessment of all of those things. Um, it comes out to a figure that's just shy of a million dollars. So almost a million has been spent on planning and possible implementation strategy. For a new library, yes. And, and there's, we have a, we could, we did that analysis and so there's an itemized list that shows. All of those pieces that make up that number that I can send to you, people like that.
That'd be great, Ken. That, that, that'd really be good. Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Alright, the um, any other comments, questions? For Jenny, Mark, anyone?
I just wanna go back to my previous comment about using the library for other purposes, for social events. There are many libraries in the country that use the library, so it's not some unusual idea. Uh, spoken and public library rents their room for the. To, and then others organize birthday parties or so, so that's kind of where. This may be as something that's. But a room that's sitting, there, it's not utilized for something. That's already approved could be used for something else and give benefit for the community that way.
Um.
Just as a thought out there, I don't know what would that involve in terms of how do you operationalize, needs to approve it or so, but it is possible to, to do that.
Well, got it. I, I, yeah, I understood that, uh, when I made my comment about um, putting that on the city, but um. The uh operational end of that, yeah, that would have to be really thought out. And the city would have to be brought into that discussion. Because if you're charging rental fees, then you have to set up, you have to set a fee schedule on the lack of that stuff, which I think um. The city has to, has to take, take that.
Yeah, so anecdotally, before any thought or discussion is put into the, to the allowable uses, I mean. That would be no different. We, we have a precedent already for doing that, so it wouldn't be different from that precedent. There would need to be some thought into um. To your point, we would have to incorporate, the, the fee schedule element would have to go before and be approved by the council. Um, because that's part of the, the budget making process. It doesn't mean that we would have to wait till next year to do it. We could bring a budget amendment with a fee adjustment at any time. Um, but you would wanna have some deliberation about what that would look like. But with respect to the, the precedent, uh, that's been established with the Rotary Room. And then with other, um, even if it's not inside of Liberty Lake, uh. Spoke, or I guess it would be the county library system does a similar arrangement. Where it doesn't have to be an event of this kind, but if it's not an event of this kind, there's a fee associated with it of some kind.
And I don't know, the space now is small. I was thinking about that months ago and I gather we will have. Bunch of library and rooms and that would be a good use of the space. I don't know exactly, and that would be up to. To tell us, is one, is there a demand and is, is there a capacity or something like that, both in a space point of view and from a staff, staffing point of view?
And, and I would think that you would wanna have those discussions before making a recommendation of yea or nay. Would do some kind of analysis and then have a uh, sort of a workshop about that at the. Board level before making a specific recommendation.
So that, my question around this is like, do we wanna ban, again going back to this, is the, do you wanna ban those activities or do you wanna, is there room and capacity to actually? You know, help the community with that type of services and then have some additional funds and then they're available to the library for other projects.
So, question Jenny, have you had any requests for use of that room for, let's say, like a birthday party or uh?
Yes. Yes, I have one on Monday. So I would say. Probably once a month, we would get a request that I know of. Um, for the meeting room, um, whether it be for like a birthday party, a baby shower. Um, maybe like a networking event where like, you know, local businesses lunch type of event as well. Um, so yeah, there, there is the some demand for it, for sure.
Fundraising.
Yeah, thank you. Anna, are questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay.
No.
That's Mark.
So I, I wanted to clarify my previous comments, going back to the topic of the cost of. Developing library projects. I, I wanted to clarify, so as to not confuse anyone who may be listening, who is either new to the conversation. Or doesn't know all of the pieces that have gone into this between, uh, I mentioned two thousand and seven and now. Um, I, I just, I don't wanna give the impression that there was activity in two thousand and seven and there was activity in. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. There, there was also a significant effort in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen timeframe. So essentially what you have is three separate project development phases over. Uh, two decades. Um, if you, if you cost all of those things at, at the time when they were. Uh, approved and then bring those dollars forward to today for all of those pieces. That is what adds up to a figure that's approaching a million dollars. It's not just activity in two thousand and seven and then this current. There's several other pieces that. That's approaching a million dollars. It's not just activity in two thousand and seven and then this current, there's several other pieces to that. But you'll see that when, when I send you the itemized list. Great, thank you.
And, and Mark, it's, it's a high moment to think about a million dollars anyway, but I, I will assume that's true, that it's not an unusual cost for this type of projects. Why, when, when you have to do this for any type of new development?
If, if you look at the scope of the individual, each individual project, um, the, the prices that were paid. Were reasonable when you consider the level of effort that went into each development. Through those various phases over that amount of time. When you add them all together and say it's a million dollars, people go. Um, and that's a large number, but, but to Michael's point, it was done, there were three distinct projects developed. At three different times, um, and so you, you would incur costs on all three of those.
Thanks for clarifying that, Mark, thanks. Yeah, that's helpful for anybody listening, yeah, for sure. Okay, Janey, do we have anybody online?
No, it's just that one.
Okay, so there won't be any comments, and so we don't have to go through that again. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all favor saying goodbye for the day?
Bye.
Bye.
All right, we are adjourned, thanks.
Bye, everyone.